First name I have is Jim Peterson. Come on down.
I might be confused, so just bear with me. Because of the two, and I pulled them both off. One says 90 days on the tent encampments. Another one says 180 days. I just want to make sure that the one you're going to, the interim, has the 180 days instead of the 90 days. And that would be in the, the, I guess, the one you already passed in section five. No, the one you were looking at, section five says 180 days. And then the one you passed, it says 90 days. So I just want to make sure that we're on the same page because I thought we'd already talked about that amendment. That's all I have to say. I support him. I know you were going to pass him, so.
Okay, straight. All right. Thanks, Jim. Doug? Gusson?
Okay. Hi, I'm Doug, Technical Director of Homes Now. You, earlier, a couple of days ago, I think we sent you guys two proposals for our proposed camp unity site. Basically, we, basically, we had, one proposal included tents and tiny homes, and the other proposal included just tiny homes. Now, the reason why we had two proposals was because we basically wanted to give you guys options. So, we wanted to, basically, what Homes Now envisioned as anything related to, if we had tents, it would be very short-term while the person who's in the tent is building their own tiny home and it's in the middle of being constructed. We never intended for tents to be, to be onsite long-term like what Seattle does or like what LA does. So, but, basically, we're fine with either. We've just been working at this for a long time. We've been working with you guys for months. And we are just looking for something that'll work, that you guys will vote yes on, and we can move forward. And so, that's the only reason why we're presenting multiple options. We're hoping that you can, we can make either proposal work. Basically, we're looking for a path forward. We're wondering if there was any way you might be able to get together, figure out which one of the four sites we've proposed would work best, and push through to make it happen. We're able to come up with more ideas, but we're not exactly sure which ideas you guys would be willing to vote on or pass. It's already midsummer. Pretty soon, it'll be winter. What do we have to do to prove ourselves and make this happen? We're fine with anything. We just want to help homeless people. So, anyway, take it easy.
Thanks, Doug.
Hey, Doug.
Councilmember Brenner.
That's okay. You can get away with that. You said you sent us something?
Yeah, yeah. Two days ago, we have, and I, I put it there in paper form, too. So, this is the proposal that I have here that doesn't have any tents, and it's, it's, if you want to see it, it's got.
I don't even remember. Did, did I just not?
You might have not seen it, but there's a copyright here for you, so.
Did we get it a few days ago?
On an email.
Okay.
Yeah, we just, we're giving you guys options, so, thank you. Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Mike Kaufman.
Mike Kaufman, Waccah County. Speaking as a privileged white guy that spends, and pays taxes. I support what these folks are doing. I have a place to live. I have a car. I have money. I have all the things that keep me out of trouble. And I have spoken many times, but just, it's, give people some place to go where they know they can be, that they're not going to be hassled, that they can put their stuff and they can lay out. I just support that as a voter. And whether it's popular or not with the voting public, it's time to do what's right. And I support this movement. These folks are putting a lot of energy into it. They're stepping forward to help solve a big problem for us, and they deserve our support to prove their, their point and to prove their energy and to help solve this problem. And last week, I was at the debate with the prosecutors. And both of them spoke, if they were to get elected, that they would start releasing a bunch of inmates that are there for failure to pay bond and not having money and all the things that drove them, for whatever reason, the prosecutor, for not being maybe violent or other things. And so, we better get on with doing something with the folks that are out there now because if that takes place, think about the fact that there's going to be a whole lot more people being released in the wintertime without places to go. So, let's start dealing with it now. Thank you.
And the next name I have on here, Charlie. There's Sturz?
Yes.
Oh, there's Charlie. Okay, like, your writing's as good as mine.
Fun to come back and talk to council again. I am speaking both for the emergency ordinance and for the whole process in general. It is so exciting to actually see some real action, at least apparently, if you approve the proposal, on the homeless issue. We do an awful lot of jawing, and we keep saying, "Well, let's do a study here, and let's figure it out," and people are still homeless. So, let's get at least some people homeless. I think it's a good program. I like the, I just glanced through the, the rules of conduct, and I didn't really see anything color, so I, I think we're going to figure out how to work with this. And I think, you know, we've got a lot of energy. And one of the benefits to approving our process is that it's going to keep us busy for, at least until springtime. We will be unable to do any sort of agitation or politicizing. This is going to be, you know, it's, at most, it's going to house 40 people or something like that. So, it's, it's not going to solve the problem, but it is a location where we're not going to be able to cause any problem, no matter what's going on. And let's get a program going, and let's see what happens. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Charlie.
Your name?
Charlie Sturz, Roosevelt Neighborhood. Okay, so that is the extent of people who've signed up for the ordinance that we're actually going to be able to vote on. Most people signed up for...
You still can talk.
Yeah, no, everyone's going to have a chance. Yeah, whether you signed up or not, we get, we're going to make sure. But I just want to let people, right now, my script says we, if anybody else has not signed up, we can have everybody come down and vote. But a lot of people signed up for the one we actually can't vote on because it's a hearing on the emergency ordinance that we've already adopted. I got that right, right?
Just start calling names.
So, I'm going to call names, and if I don't call your name, you can still come down. So, I'm going to the next list. Lynn Lor.
I'm Lynn Lor from the Columbia neighborhood, but I don't know enough to speak. I would ask that you let me speak later after other people have spoken.
Okay. Just make sure you have a chance.
Everett Barton of Woods Neighborhood. And I'm, I hit a snag in my rental situation that I'm not going to go into, but what happened, certain things, I found out that I was, I was a member of Homes Now. I didn't know that I was. I went to the Facebook page and tried to join, and when I hit the join button, it said, "Do you want to delete or unfollow?" And so, I said, "Oh, I guess I'm already a member." So, I found that out. And then I joined the Bellingham Tenants Union. So, if there's other folks in here who are representing Bellingham Tenants Union, I want to shout, give a shout-out for them. And we're trying to get more people who are renting to sign up for the, for the Bellingham Tenants Union. It's bellinghamtenantsunion.org. And what we're going to do is, based upon the size of our membership, we'll have some clout to go down and tackle the landlord lobby in Olympia. And I'm going to be on the policy committee as a trained paralegal in another state. I've never practiced paralegal in this state because it's, we've been closed out as, as practicing freelance paralegals. You have to be in the law office in order to do that. But, the idea of forming, forming and fomenting policy around a Bellingham, around a tenants' union interests me to see how much traction we can get. Now, I'm going to be leaving Bellingham and going to Grand Junction, Colorado, where my daughter and my grandkids are. And I'm going to see about getting a tiny home put on that property. So, when I come back in February to Bellingham, I'm going to be looking, I'm also on the section eight list. If, I don't know how that's going to work out with, when I'm going to get a section eight voucher. But Homes Now is offering now, there's a possibility I can bring my tiny home down and, and join that group, actually, with physical presence on that property, or just be in that, if I don't bring the home down with me from Colorado, I can just be down here and work to get a tiny home going. So, I just, I'm not going to stay in, in Colorado. I want to see something, I want to try and generate some interest of, between generating Bellingham and Grand Junction to be sister cities. The city in the Intermontane region, from Helena and Missoula down to Albuquerque and the Arizona cities, Intermontane region and the coast. It's going to be very important to have solidarity in global warming, climate change.
Give me a second, please.
If we have an earthquake out here, then we can get some solidarity, some, some sympathy from Grand Junction. If Grand Junction has problems, they can get sympathy from us. And they're putting sculpture on their corners, and we put sculpture on our corners. So, it's easy to take Facebook photos and start, start doing the whole sister city thing. So, thank you for your time.
Could you please state your name again? The staff didn't get it.
Everett Barton, Woods Neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Leathers? Leathers? I'm saying it right. I should have announced that I will butcher some names here, so, sorry.
It's okay. I'm speaking just because I know that you haven't passed this ordinance yet, but I want to thank you all very much. Thank you all. I don't have my, where are my glasses? Those aren't the right ones.
Right behind you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Kathy Leathers. I want to thank you all so much for supporting Homes Now in acquiring land, establishing safe shelter for people who do not have a home. I think you guys really need a thumbs up. I know the last, this one hasn't totally been passed yet, but you have been so supportive all along. I appreciate your compassion and sense of justice for those who have little power of their own. I'm very proud of Waccah County, and most of it's because of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to read a couple of names here. People are going to call, come down at once, so we can go back and forth. Lorena Havens, Karen Edlund, Alex McLean, and then Galen Hertz. Both mics work?
I'm Lorena Havens. I live out on Mosquito Lake Road out in the county. And I totally support this. Fortunately, I've had the opportunity to read them through. I'm very impressed. I'm impressed with the writing, the presentation. I think it's a great plan. But I'd also like to speak a moment for the fears that I hear people saying. And I think there's two fears. And one of them is a fear of our children, particularly our daughters, I mean, playground. When I was a kid, I lived not that far from a park, right by the railroad track, where the hobos and the bums would get off. And we weren't allowed to play there. It was considered dangerous. These were strangers. And I think that's where a lot of fear comes from. This community is not going to be strangers. They're our neighbors. They're people who, chances are, lived next door to us before they became homeless. So, I think that the fear that people have of this kind of fear is really baseless in this situation. I think the other fear that comes up is that, you know, for a lot of us, we're not that far from being homeless ourselves. You lose a job, you lose your social security check, an accident, hospitalization, and any of us could become homeless. And we feel sort of uncomfortable seeing other people homeless around us. And so, we try to hide it. So, I think you also are going to get a lot of feedback of people who are afraid of having to deal with the homeless issue. Where I think at the moment, this is such a hopeful sign. You know, even if I were to become homeless, there's possibility. There's people who are willing to work with us, who are finding solutions. And I just think that is so wonderful. And I think hope is really necessary in this time, where there's a lot of things that are against this. And the fact that you're going to be doing this, hopefully, is really wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks. Karen Edlund? Then Alex?
Hi, I'm Karen Edlund, and I support this. I appreciate your effort. You know, I'm in my 50s. I still have parents and brothers and children, so I have a safety net and lots of friends, but some people don't have that. And I really appreciate that you're taking this on. It's beautiful.
Alex?
Hi, guys. Alex McLean, Happy Valley. Thank you for getting this far, and thank you for giving folks the opportunity to do these types of projects. I don't have anything profound to say. I just have admired Homes Now vicariously, and I've seen them put a lot of energy and work into this project. I hope you are able to give them their preferred option, which I believe is option 1A. And, you know, as, as a construction goon, I hope to be able to help them out and get more involved because I see this as being a long-term problem in our community. And just any way that we can step up and, you know, push this forward, as you guys are, is better for everyone. So, thanks for your work.
Galen, and then Hill Cummings, Lynette Allen, Hillary Cole.
Good evening, members of the county council. My name is Galen Hertz. I live in the Leonard Streets neighborhood, and I'm a member of the Bellingham Tenants Union. Thank you all for taking public comment tonight. I'm here supporting Homes Now and the temporary encampment ordinance because I want all of my neighbors to have a home. People shouldn't be dying on the streets every winter. I don't think that tent encampments and tiny homes are the solution to homelessness or housing affordability. They are one solution of many that we need, and some housing options will work for some people and won't work for others. I support permitted encampments because they provide a good option for some of our neighbors experiencing homelessness right now. And I've been impressed with Homes Now and their drive, their creativity, and their urgency. If the shower truck isn't a testament to Waccah County ingenuity and the desire and energy of people here to have a better place for all of us, I don't know what is. And Homes Now has already been building tiny homes and housing people in partnership with Lummy Stepping Stones. So, I'm glad that the council here has been working with Homes Now in this ordinance. Please continue this work and help them find land and other critical elements for success. And thank you for all your work. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hill? And then Lynette, and then Hillary Cole?
Hi, I'm Lynette Allen, and I live on Northwest in Bellingham, 40 years and 12 years at that location. And I just want to encourage you all to, to take this opportunity and say yes to camp unity. I just really think these people are amazing, Homes Now, and they definitely have been helping me. I volunteered with them and then found out I had to move because of a big hike at my rent, and I got a lot of help at Homes Now. So, I'm getting a place, and they're helping me move as well. So, that's it.
Thank you.
I'm Hill Cummings. I live in Waccah County. I've been here three decades. I live on the north side of Texas Street in the 42nd. I've been around this community a long time, and I'm really glad that something is finally happening. I'm glad that you're doing something. And I don't know that, I'm sure that we've all talked about what's going on and what people are doing, but I don't know that we, we've actually embraced what can actually happen if something like this could exist. Connection to services, connection, a sense of community. Even it's like, like, we all have our little neighborhoods, our little whatever, but if we had a place to go, if everybody knew that they were welcome in this town and had a sense of community. And I just want to thank you for, and thank everyone who's like, on this initiative, but now is the time. I've sat on a lot of boards and commissions and stuff, and, but we have to really do something now. And I think this is a very good start, and if, and if there are hiccups, it's a good way to learn. It's a good way to do, do it better. But we have to build community, and this is a way for the people who have, who don't have any community, their community maybe is lost. They're, they're in the mission, they're on a doorstep. But we have to give people community in order for people to be part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh. And then Hillary, and anybody else?
I'm Lynn Lor, and I'm from Columbia. And I want to say that this is a really good example of loving your neighbor, and I'm moved by it, very moved by it. It's a big, big thing in my life to love my neighbors. And I think that it's being done here, and a way is opening for them to be truly their best selves and to grow and to live and to help us. Each one that we give a home to is a possible helper of us all. Think about it. Be faithful, be strong, and move toward inclusivity. Thank you.
Hillary? And then anybody who hasn't signed up? Or you still have a chance?
Hi, my name is Hillary Cole. I live in Bellingham. Okay. Homes Now seems to be the only organization that never gives up despite opposition from the city. I wonder if this county has ever seen such a dynamic organization like Homes Now. I mean, really, this is unbelievable. Homes Now is unique in that it believes formerly homeless people should direct themselves, peers helping peers. You know, people who have been around the same block. Please provide them with the opportunity to put Waccah County on the, on the map. Thank you.
Hillary?
I'm Amy Glasser from the Cornwall Park neighborhood, and I work with Homes Now. And I think what, I, I just wanted to discuss a bit about option one, option two, and some confusion. We started with wanting tiny homes. That's all we wanted, was to make tiny homes, and that was Jim's dream. As we're waiting and seeing the winter come, it's like, okay, what can we do now to make sure things happen even faster? I think the idea of adding the tents, although I will say, it does look fairly permanent when you look at those tents, really were the idea of having the people build the homes they'll be in. And then we slowly get rid of the tents as we fill those 12 tiny homes. We're starting with six and then to 12, and those people will be able to fill the homes as they build community as well as building the homes. So, the idea was to get rid of the, get rid of the tents because tents aren't permanent. I honestly, as a therapist, see some of these tiny homes as permanent for people. There are people who just don't necessarily want more than that. And if that's all they want, and that's going to keep them safe, and that's going to keep them off the streets and keep them healthy, then that seems to be a great goal for me. So, what we're hoping for is the land, one of those locations, preferably northwest, because I think that's easiest to access for social workers, for the clients, for people out in the county, and least amount of neighbors nearby. We can't even be seen by the soccer fields or heard, and we can't even hear them. So, I still have a little bit more time. Please. You, you, you know how many millions of mistakes we've made, and you're still listening to us. And I'll, I'll say to Barbara and Tyler, who were like, first on board to say, "We get it." Please still get it. Please, everybody, understand that we will take 12 tiny homes, and if you don't want any tents to start working on them, then we'll bus people in to help work on their homes. We just want to make this happen. And I think if we got the 12 homes, if we can get them by December or November, then we have maybe 18 people housed. And then you'll love how great it is, and we'll put 12 more on, and it'll be a small little community of 24 little homes that'll be painted beautifully with lovely landscape. Everybody who's going to be in those homes is going to be giving something. Part of the application process is, what do you give? And if they're disabled, maybe they cook. Maybe they can handle the, the front desk when people come in to visit others. We have it so planned so that everybody has a purpose. And I have to say, just that two, three-week tent encampment that we had in front of City Hall, a community was built.
30 seconds, please.
Oh, wow! And, and, damn! A community was built and a community actually died right before my eyes as it broke up. Yeah, no, I'm begging you. Please let them have, let Homes Now build those homes. I don't do any of the building. I do the summits, and I see the people who need these homes. I know you're going to do this because, because you get it. And, and we hope the city will come along someday, but they're not there yet, so, begging you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello. My name is Misty O'Loughlin. I live up off Cordotta. I've been in and out of Bellingham when I'm in the country. I'm here for the last 10 years, and I absolutely love this place and the community in it. I'm a volunteer with Homes Now. I appreciate that you guys listening to us and working with us. Honestly, winter is coming. People freeze to death. I know someone who froze to death. If this was any of our families, we would want this for them, and our community is our family. We would want them to have a sane, safe place to go while they transition into permanent housing. And like Amy said, if, you know, they, somebody wants to stay there, that's, but most people do want to transition into permanent housing, and it's a great opportunity if you have a place to be safe and comfortable and part of something. Even if it's only a handful of people, these are human beings. Every single life matters. They deserve this. Our community deserves this. Please help us give this gift to our community's most vulnerable people before the next person freezes to death. Thank you.
Thank you, Misty.
I'm Bea Ackland. I live in the Birchwood neighborhood. I want to thank you guys all for your service on the council. I know that's not easy work, and I know the hours that you put in. I've never once given testimony or spoken in a public setting like this for the county council, but I was moved to do so by that homeless encampment this past winter, moved to get involved with Homes Now. I recently started volunteering with them, and I'm in full support of, of their mission and of the proposal and of your ordinance, and I thank you for taking the time to, to get this going. I just, all I do for them is work on the mobile shower truck, and I can tell you firsthand, these people, this organization, do amazing work to meet really basic human needs with immediate tangible results in terms of human dignity and, and life quality. So, please continue to empower them to take the next step by approving this ordinance and supporting their plans. Thank you.
Thanks, Bea. I like your sticker.
Carmen Gilmore, Waccah County resident and also volunteer with Homes Now and Safe Storage. Just wanted to come tonight to say that I'm in support of Homes Now's, Home Now, Homes Now's camp unity at the Northwest site, and I ask the county to support this location also. I had the opportunity to visit TC5 in Seattle, Tent City 5, which camp unity is based on. And it was a thing of beauty. It was clean. It was orderly. It was well-run. And they did not have running water, and bathrooms and sanitation were not a problem. I've heard that some of the soccer moms and dads are pushing back against having camp unity near the Northwest Fields. My son actually is out there right now. In fact, I'm missing his last baseball game of the season to be here, which I'm super bummed about, but I feel super strongly about this issue, and that's why I'm here. So, I'm completely in support of having camp unity at the Northwest site, and I hope to be able to see it there next baseball season and to see, and to stop in and say hi and lend our support to the residents on our way to and from games. I want our elected officials to do what is right and just, not what is easy, to use our positions, to use your positions of power to stand up for and champion our most marginalized community members. When choosing who to support, coming down on the side of the marginalized and vulnerable, not the privileged. Please support Homes Now Camp Unity at the Northwest location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. You've met me before. My name is J.C. Mansfield. I'm giving you a second copy of our camp unity handbook, which the title may change. We were thinking... We were thinking Unity Village or something to that extent. What I like to say, or at least quote, is something that Sharon Lee, which is someone you all met recently, stated in one of her articles, saying, "Anytime a new multifamily apartment building is planned to provide homeless housing, it takes three to four years to get through land assembly, financing, design, building permits, and construction." We know building more low-income housing is the real solution. But with hundreds of families and individuals on the streets today, tiny houses are a viable, low-cost, and dignified solution in these safe lives. So my purpose here is to just simply say to you that we are fully prepared to provide all the data that you need. So I'm coming from a technical person's involvement with Homes Now. This is a prototype. We don't have anything like this in this town. We would like to get this started so that we will have something with a baseline from start to finish to show what we need to do. So we're going to identify our tasks, our costs, our timeline, the work that's needed, and customize some reports for all of you to look at from start to finish. So that's my purpose here today. And I hope you'll go over the handbook again. It is a work in progress. This is our outline. This thing is going to grow to be this big. All right? We have inserts we're putting in for every managerial position, waste management, surveillance. All of the things you see in this handbook are just the headings. So expect it to grow. All right? And I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Marcus D. Stidham, S-T-I-D-H-A-M, Wacom County resident for 30-plus years. Good to see you all again. And I thank you so much for all the support that you've given us and what we're trying to do. I feel really great about what we're about to embark on. I see there's a lot of work ahead. I see you as partners in that. And I thank you. I once came in here talking about how I had come from, myself, a tiny home village, if you will, and a fishing village on Lummy Island when I first came out here as a kid. I moved out here at 14. The stability that that offered me was really something. I moved out of what we called the ghetto and found myself better housing. And, you know, things changed. And I found myself, "I need to go back to the ghetto." And when I did, there was no housing available. But this one needs work. And you can camp in this one. And we can get that one up. And that's what I want to do here. I want to be able to house people in the tents while they're working on their shelters and phase out of the tents as the shelters grow. I'm going to set that aside and say that that works. It worked for me. Okay? The other thing that I really want to talk about is Camp... I mean, the Site A out of Northwest. This is a public service area. We've all decided to service the public. These people are the public we're going to service. And this is a public service area. This is the location. There are no neighbors. And it's a straight shot to Bellingham. You've heard all the rest. But really, this is where it belongs. These are the public. Let's service them at the public service location. Let's get started. Kids are in the back of the car. Everybody's screaming. The engine's running. Let's go. Okay? Thanks.
How do I follow that? Aaron Thomas, A-A-R-O-N. I wanted to give my testimony a little bit about two years ago when Lummy Nation, a few of us decided that we wanted to help our Lummy homeless. We were just community members trying to figure out, what are we going to do next? We knew winter was coming. It was a few months from then, in July of 2016. And you fast forward, and we've helped over 30 families get into shelter... From shelter into their own place. And most of it in Lummy apartment housing. And I want to thank Tim. He was on tribal council back then. You know, one of the things that, when we did that, there was all kinds of questions about, well, you're going to put Lummy people in these shelters? Well, there's all these questions. Well, what if this happens? What if that happens? And I'm very thankful for the tribal council at the time who said, "We've got to take care of our people. We've got to do this." And that first winter, who knows how many of our tribal members we would have lost had we not done this? And there was a million questions that... And, you know, all kinds of political, you know, we can't do this because I'm going to lose my base. I'm going to lose that family. You know, they're not going to vote for me. But you know what? All those folks that we've helped are now helping others. And if we could start over again, rather than doing the homeless shelters with Lummy stepping stones, I'd want to do tiny homes first. I would much rather do that because there's a lot less infighting that goes on. You know, if you live in your own little shelter, you're going to fight with yourself than with, you know, a group of people. So I really urge you to... And I want to thank all the ones that came forward and shared their input with you, not just tonight, but over the last few months, six, seven months. And of course, Jim and the group and Homes Now. I'm really, you know, very blessed to see a group of leaders here that, you know, literally do care about the people. And my hands go out to you. High Chukasim. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Krista Rome. And I have been reflecting a lot on the big-picture connections here. I feel pretty strongly that our part of the country is going to be a climate refuge. It's going to continue to be an economic refuge for places that are more expensive, like Seattle and California, climate refuge for the rest of the country as things heat up faster elsewhere. And I think as a result, a lot of the challenges that we currently face in our community are going to get even that much more challenging, particularly in regards to environmental protection and affordable housing and homeless issues. And at the same time, I think about how much our society has gone more and more away from having a community approach to things and more and more individualistic. And so in that context, I really don't want to underestimate the importance and the power of the community pulling together on an issue like this of average citizens, many of them who are struggling a lot in their own lives, coming together with their time, their labor, and their support. I think this is really rare and precious. And I want to see more of it. Far too many people are not engaged in community building these days. I mean, there's not really even very many people here at the meeting tonight, as you see. So in my ideal world, our elected officials would be visionaries that have those out-of-the-box, creative, timely solutions for us on these issues. But I am a little bit of an idealist. And I recognize that from your side of the table, it's not as easy as it would seem. And I want to respect that. And so my second favorite option is for you to use your power and your position to do everything you can do to break down the barriers and the red tape that can get in the way of these very types of community organizations that are just trying to help others in our community. And so I thank you for the work that you're doing. And I hope that you will apply that kind of thinking to other issues in the future as well. And I should share that with the city council also.
Thanks, Krista.
I'm Joy Gilfillan, president of the Restorative Community Coalition. And oftentimes, when I come to the council, I seem to be complaining or talking negative about things or bringing forward challenges. Tonight, I have big hands up and thank you for looking at this project and truly taking it to heart. We have so many homeless people in this community. We have a lot of homeless people who aren't even counted in the homeless register. And a couple of years ago, I met a gentleman. He wrote a book called Breakfast at Sally's. He's from Brumerton. And I went down and met him and talked to him. He was a millionaire. He used to run an encyclopedia publishing company. And in under 12 months, he went from being top of the economic ladder to being at the bottom, homeless, living in his car, and almost killed himself by jumping off a bridge. But his dog barking at him from his car made him not do it. And his story, not only the story that he wrote, but the story that he told us in a meeting, was real eye-opening to me. And what he said was that what he learned as a very, very wealthy man was completely different than what he learned in the streets. He said, "When I was very rich..." He said, "I had all the boats. I had all the cars. I had two homes. I had a wife. I had family. The instant I went bankrupt, I lost it all, all." He said, "I lost it all." And he had to go back in the streets and learning. He typed the book from his car with a hand... With one of the old-fashioned typewriters. And he said, "What I learned was in the streets, people will give you the shirt off their back when they don't have another one. If you need it worse than they do, they'll help you." And I'd really encourage any of you to go read that book. It's Breakfast at Sally's. And for the life of me, I can't remember his name, but Irene might know it. But it's an amazing book. And he's traveled the country. It was a bestseller. And he's traveled the country talking to chambers of commerce and top-flight people because, he said, "You just don't see the world the same way at all." Second person that got my attention a few years ago was actually two people, two professors up at Western who ran a study on homelessness. And they presented five different proposals to the city and the county. It's the city. I think they brought it to the county as well. But they were five amazing homeless camp and transitional housing-type proposals. One of them was to take a bunch of boats that can't float. Well, they can sit on land. So they rebuilt boat camps. And he had five proposals. I can email it to you. It's all available. These guys did an amazing job. And what these two, these fellows have done has given you a really clean, simple proposal. And it's good work. And I really recommend endorsing that project out there. The third person, I'll make this really short. There was a woman who was in charge of a homeless project. And she said that she worked. And she built people. What she would do is she would take the people who needed to sleep in the woods. She helped them.
30.
When they moved up, she just graduated them up the ladder until they were finally free. You can do it here. Thank you.
Joy, will you send me the Western?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. We have been joined by Mr. Brown on the phone.
Yeah, I can hear you fine. Just tell me where you're on the agenda.
We are in public... I'm sorry, a public hearing on the interim ordinance for temporary homeless facilities. And we have more people to speak. Go ahead.
Good evening. Name's Dana Briggs, B-R-I-G-G-S. Homeless within Bellingham. Situation hasn't changed since December. However, I am fully employed now. So that's the good news. But even being fully employed doesn't get me out of the homeless situation. So kudos to the council because you're setting a precedent that needs to be set because the way we get things changed in this country is not from the top down, contrary to popular belief. It's from the bottom up. It's where we can sit and look at each other and interact with each other and do the things that are necessary to help our brothers and sisters that are less fortunate out of the situations that they're in. Three things come to mind after listening to everything everybody else speak tonight. Number one, you're setting the precedent that needs to be emulated by the other municipalities within this county. All of the concentration has been on Bellingham and the county at large. But we've heard nothing from Linden, from Ferndale, from Birch Bay, from Everson, from Nuxack, from Custer, from other places. I think... Kudos to Councilmember Buchanan and Brown for being on the task force. But this is something that needs to be spread county-wide. And I'll keep harping on this until we get as close as we can to solving the issue. There are over 3,000 homeless people in this county and probably way more than we even realize. Point two, many of those people are homeless not because they want to be there. It's because they've given up. And they've given up because they no longer feel that they're part of the community because they're looked down upon in one form or another. Many of them are verbally abused. Some of them have addiction issues that need to be worked on. But the preponderance of the homeless are in situations like I am, where I don't have those particular challenges. Our challenges are the economic side of the house and trying to find affordable housing, which is one of the reasons why the Bellingham Tenants Union, realistically, should be county-wide in my mind. Because developers and landlords have gotten totally out of control. But that's an entirely different subject different subject for somewhere down the line. Lastly...
Thirty seconds, please.
In... When we think of the state that these brothers and sisters are in, none of this is ever going to be totally solved. We're always going to have this issue. But we have to do something to continue to get things done now. And so approve the plan, give them the chance to either do the tent-to-tiny-home transition or the tiny home outright, but it needs to get done, and it needs to get done now because I don't want to see anybody else dying on the streets from here on out. Thank you.
Irene, and then if there's anybody else who still wants to speak about the ordinance on these zoning regulations, if you didn't sign up.
Good evening. Thank you. Irene Morgan, Watkin County. Camp Unity, what an awesome title. Thank you, Jim and Doug, for all the work you've done and all the people that have joined you to do this work. There were a group, about twelve of us, ten years ago, Bellingham's Friends of the Homeless, that did similar, not nearly this in-depth, but we brought it forward. And as you know, I am founder of the Restorative Community Coalition, so I've been busy at other things, not ever forgetting the homeless, however. I totally support this group of people in their quest, and I highly, I just think that you all have hearts and will do the right thing regarding these people that need our help. Many are employed, so how do they get ready to go to work? I'll bet they don't have a nice cozy bed that they've just gotten out of with a roof over their heads, a furnace that works or an air conditioner that works, a shower down the hall or across the room, food in the refrigerator in their kitchen, clean clothes. How do you get ready to go to work if you're homeless? I was involved in the point-in-time count a couple of years. Then things changed, and the Bellingham decided to go, or Watkin County decided to go with the federal regulations and count only those that were truly homeless or what they considered to be truly homeless by the federal standards, and did not include those that were couch surfing. And the last time I was involved was about five or six years ago, and there were thirteen hundred homeless people. And I would very much agree with the man that just spoke. I know there's far more people homeless than we count or that we include in the count. I've told people that I work with the homeless, and some take two steps back from me because they don't understand that they're people. They're somebody's brothers, sisters, children. And I really know that when people have the opportunity to be good citizens and be able to do the things that we all want to do, I believe, we want to be good citizens, we'll do that. But many have conviction histories-
Seconds, please.
And there's not much that you can do if you're homeless with a conviction history. And I believe that no one, as a child, aspires to be homeless. They don't go around saying, "I want to be homeless when I grow up." It's circumstances. And we all know that the circumstances lead us in places that most of us would not ever dream of being. And we've lost hundreds of people in our homeless camps and around the community.
Time.
I have great hope for our future, and I have great hope that you will support this group, doing the best work we can do right now. And we can, like other people have said, let's expand it. Thanks so much. Thanks for all you do.
Thanks, Irene.
Hi, I'm Victoria Savage. I'm from East County, Bellingham, Rome Valley. And I think the last time I talked to you, I cried during my entire testimony. So I'm literally sitting here, clenching my hands, digging my fingernails in to keep it straight tonight. So thank you, first of all, for all of your compassion. I've seen all of you help directly with the homeless, and I know we can do this together. And I want to say that so many people try to parse out the reasons for people being homeless. What is the trauma that created this? How did they get to that place? Well, sometimes it's just bad luck, like it was in my case. I had a month of savings, and that wasn't enough. The reason why I was crying is, and I was crying all throughout this testimony tonight, and I won't now, is because you're looking at forty years after the primary trauma of being homeless. That is the trauma. We don't need to wonder why they're there. We need to address the trauma. It is forty years later, and I am still traumatized by this. I'm not traumatized by the sexual abuse I had to endure, the harassment, and the physical abuse that I took while I was homeless, none of that. I am traumatized by the mere fact of being homeless, having been homeless. We have a chance to stop this trauma. Please, I beg of you, please. Please vote for Camp Unity. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak about the ordinance? If not, I will close the public hearing on this. Oh, we'll get to the ferry in open session. Yeah, if there's anybody else that wants to speak about this ordinance on zoning, this is that, but we'll have an open session for everything else. Okay, so seeing nobody else, I will close the public hearing. Mr. Personias, I regret that I skipped the part where it said staff report, so I don't know if you... I'm new to this. See what happens when Mr. Brown leaves.
I knew he was here for some reason.
Well, I think you've covered it. This is an interim ordinance, good for one year, that would authorize both temporary tent encampments and temporary tiny house encampments. They are temporary. Emergency shelter, it puts in place standards, operation plans, management plan requirements, conditions that would need to be approved. And it mirrors kind of what the city has been doing, what the state statute allows. And we go a little bit further than that in terms of protecting public health and safety and setting out the conditions and standards for those. So that is good for a year if you pass this, and then the idea being that you would work on, see how that works, and then work on permanent.
Ms. Brenner?
I just found out about these locations, and we haven't heard back from the deputy executive about locations. So do you know anything about them?
I don't. I haven't seen those, so I don't. I can't speak to them.
So I guess what I'm trying to... Where's, is Tyler on vacation or what?
He is, yep.
When's he gonna be back?
I think next week, yeah.
Okay. I know the executive's here, and maybe Executive Lous could answer some of this. I don't know. I just would like to know what... There's four places listed on one of these things, and do we have any information?
This is Executive Lous. I haven't seen the documentation either of the four proposed sites. I'm not on the mailing list that it comes. I'm assuming that council has gotten some stuff, but I haven't seen it. And I won't be prepared to comment on them tonight.
I didn't think so, but yeah, if you wouldn't mind taking these, because I just got these. But I would like us to be talking about sites.
Yes, of course, the ordinance tonight establishes the ability for the county or for religious organizations to cite homeless camps, either through religious organizations or nonprofits. The citing of the facility would be a separate action. I think the first thing the county would need to do is identify the site, determine the appropriateness as it relates to wetlands, services, so on and so forth, develop a lease with the organization, go through the standard indemnity fee, insurance, obligations, all that good stuff, lease of property, which the council would have to approve. And then, along with that, I'm sure concurrent to that would be for the group to put together the whole work plan that would be established under that. So for now, the establishment of the ordinance would make that possible. But then the work begins for the organization and for the county as it relates to the citing. And as I've articulated in the past, the approval of the site is gonna be a council action. And we'll definitely comment on it for you.
Mr. Buchanan?
Hopefully soon. That's okay. I just hope that soon.
Mr. Buchanan?
I would move approval.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and two seconds.
Double second.
Couple of seconds.
So we have a motion and further discussion on this?
The only discussion, I just was also thinking, as I was reading through the ordinance, as well as the emails I received from you. I think what council is doing is, actually, we did, when we did the emergency ordinance, you can, next day, go and make an application. You know, like, the biggest thing is, what we can do is set a policy that you can go and apply. But when you go apply, I don't think council is the place to make an application. You know, like, if you read section seven and eight, the seven says, "application." There are county forms, and number eight says, "permit procedures," right? Of course, county council has to approve the lease. So I think what Mr. Lous has said is, is you could have made that application even ten days ago. Because even if this temporary ordinance passes or doesn't pass, you are already authorized with the first ordinance we approved, that go make an application. I mean, this is how I understand the process of this, right? You don't have to wait even for tonight. And sending this is great. Like, we would love to have that information and help you with that. But I don't think that we're gonna take an application, say, "You can take this site or not that site," because the way this ordinance is written, like, it could be a dollar a year lease, but there has to be a document for that, that you're using county property. It has to be leased to homes for now, right? And same thing, whatever the process you wrote and process is written in here, you must have insurance, must have this, must have that, must have that. I don't think council's gonna look at it, Mr. Personias and his team, or Jack is the person. But once they say, "Out of these four sites," or if you run into problem, they say, "None of this site is available. Come to us. We'll talk about it." Why? But I don't know. Correct me that, can we approve the site tonight? I mean, we will do that. I'm just looking for clarification myself.
No, no, what's up tonight is a hearing and adoption of the ordinance that's enabling legislation that creates the standards for an application. As the county executive said, it's part of the requirements for the application to meet the standards are that the organization has to be qualified organization, first of all, and then they have to own or control the land on which the proposed encampment is to be cited. That is, if it's to be county land, then that's a separate action that the county would have to take.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, I just wanted to say, I hope I'm not gonna cause a, you know, a storm of people to go to Lummi to look at that wonderful project there. But I am just so amazed by Homes Now, the tiny homes. I've just, I think, I disagree with some of the council members that this is a solution until we find something better, if anybody said that, which I thought I heard, but I don't know. To me, having those tiny homes is a solution for so many types of people, for not just homeless people, but they're just amazing. And I do hope people will go and look at that project out there. I hate calling it a project. That village, it's wonderful. And to have those little tiny homes together, to have that spirit of community there, I think we need more of it, no matter what, even if we ever solved homelessness. I think we need more of that. So I do appreciate the tiny homes, the way it was brought forward and what it is, and I think it's wonderful. So I'm really hoping we get our sites soon. Sites, soon.
Any other comments here? I guess I'll just echo what Councilmember Brenner's saying. This is the first step. We need to work on locations. Any other comments? It's a roll call vote. Oops, sorry, Mr. Sedu.
I'm just gonna just make comment. If you have a private land, you control that, you can go tomorrow and make your application. I mean, that's the process I understood from the day one when we were writing this legislation.
They can apply.
You know, okay, thank you. That's all.
Okay, hearing, no more comments? Can't see Mr. Brown. Is your hand up?
Okay.
I'm kidding. Shouldn't have done that. Okay.
I knew you were gonna do that.
All right, so is a roll call vote?
Tim Baloo?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown? Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Byrd?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Sot Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Hey, that passes seven zero. All council members in favor. So now the confusing part. We are now gonna have a public hearing on the emergency ordinance that we have already adopted, that this interim ordinance has repealed, which is why you had the confusion with the signup sheets. It's a rule. We have to...
Repeal it? Just a procedural-
It's a procedural hearing where if...
All the comments from the prior hearing can just be applied to this one.
Okay, so I move approval.
I have to first open the public hearing for the thing that we really can't vote on because we've already-
Nothing to approve.
It's in the script here. So hearing, no comments on that? Now I close the public hearing?
I move approval of the repeal.
I second that.
But we, there's no, no, there's nothing to actually do.
Oh, we don't do anything?
We just do what I just-
Well, that's easy. I like doing that.
It's pretty absurd, but we did it, and now I say, "Thank you," so...